...10th, 1:00 p.m. to 5:00 p.m., 40 Westford Road, Wine and Malt. We have the approval of minutes from April 9th, 10th, and 11th. We have tour guide renewal and gift acceptance. His presence, Christian Fellowship, $800 to Council on Aging gift account. Stone Soup Dinner, Inc., $2,400 to the Agricultural Committee gift account. And Sorrento's Pizzeria, $500 to the Veteran Service gift account. We're very appreciative of all of those gifts. And that is the consent agenda.
We have a question. The Ag Committee has a gift account?
That seems like unusual.
What would they spend it?
I'm just reading. I'm not the expert on this.
Maybe somebody else understands. The committee has a gift account?
A gift account?
I thought only Consolation Aging had a gift account.
I mean, exactly what would it go to?
I don't know if it's a gift account, but I think they do have an account that they've used. They receive funds, I believe, from Ag Day. People pay to have booths there, I think.
But again, what would it?
I don't think they have any means. I don't know.
I don't know.
Yeah, I wonder if they're just calling it a gift account, but it's really, they're revolving funds.
Yeah, I'm sure it's not a gift account.
And perhaps we need to just clarify that.
Why don't we look into that? Maybe at the next meeting, we can have a clarification as to where that money's going.
Because I know Ceremonies and Celebrations, for example, has an account. But generally, when they get donations, it's for operating. So we put it in there, but we don't necessarily call it a gift.
Yeah, I haven't seen that before.
Ag Committee probably doesn't get those nice coats.
Into the SASH gift account.
Right. All right.
Thank you for looking into that.
We have a motion.
Yes, I move to approve the consent account, consent agenda as read.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you. Tonight, the town manager, Chris Whalen, is on vacation, so we're pleased to have Kate Hodge here to give the town manager's report.
Hi there. Kate Hodge is assistant town manager. So Chris Whalen is out of the office, but returning on Monday, July 16. Concord Public Works has informed us that Monument Street was milled last week and is continuing this week, and they have a finish date of this Thursday for that phase. They noticed some erosion on the shoulder side due to the heavy rains that we've been having, so they're going to be taking some time this week to do some fill and repair work. So they plan to top out and pave the week of July 9. They're also scheduling Ornac to be paved that same week as well. Rich Rain, who is the director of Public Works, has been working with Larry Beals to develop a movable easement for the folks at WR Grace who can use that easement to access their parcel. Rich believes he will have a draft planned to the town manager by the end of next week for his review and presentation to you all at your next meeting. The Cambridge Turnpike Notice of Award was issued to the low bidder, Tribiano Company. I don't have any more information on that because I didn't see the notice of award, but I can get a copy. And Rich has informed us that that bid came in a couple of hundred thousand dollars under what the budget was, so it was really very advantageous for the town. The fire department has been in touch with our human services and facility staff, and they are prepared to open the Harvey Wheeler Community Center as a cooling center if need be. Right now, no one has requested that service, but if anybody needs the assistance after hours, I've been asked to have them or someone who thinks that their neighbor or a friend or family member may need it, please call the police or fire department, or you can also call the human services or the Council on Aging, and we can arrange for that. Thirty-three A and B Baker Ave has had their first land clearing event last Friday. That was funded by the Department of Conservation and Recreation from the state on a grant program. Concord was one out of 15 communities, but there were 100 applications, so 15 communities were funded, and we were one of the 15. Eight residents actually came to assist the crews in that endeavor. And in August, the Natural Resources Department is looking to put picnic tables there, and then in September, they'll be installing the parking lot for the planned access to the canoe launch, so that's really great.
So this is the area, just for those who aren't familiar, that would be sort of behind Citizens Bank and on, just, I guess, just so people can locate it.
It's land that was given to the town a few years ago.
Correct. The Long Range Plan Committee met last week and approved the draft changes that had come from all of the different boards, committees, and division managers or department heads. Those went back to Civic Moxie, and they're incorporating them into the final draft, which is slated to be presented both to the Select Board and the Personnel Board, I'm sorry, the Planning Board, at their July 24th and 30th meetings. The Bruce Freeman Rail Trail Phase 2B plans at the 75% completion arrived last week. The Director of Planning and Land Management, Marsha Razmussen, plans to put a construction and milestone schedule together and have it on our website regarding the Phase 2B and C actions. We're getting a lot of citizens' requests for that. The library is hosting their first summer concert on the lawn, July 11, and it is a Polish music band. The Recreation Division is hosting the annual Minuteman Five Mile Road Race on July 4 before the picnic in the park. It starts at 9:00 a.m. Runners ages 12 and up are there. You can still register and I'm told that you get a free tee shirt, perhaps to mop your sweat as you run. They also have included a kids' one-mile fun run that starts at 8:30, and that's $10, and the kids get a tee shirt as well. And Recreation is also hosting a concert, although this time, they're doing it at the Harvey Wheeler Community Center to try to spice up a bit of the West Concord area, and that is going to be July 12, starting at 7:00 p.m.
And isn't that also sort of part of the whole West Concord Cultural District arts awareness?
I think they were partnering with some of the more active downtown businesses, so we're trying to roll the dice on this. We're doing two. The second concert will be, I believe, the week of the 18th, and we're looking to also have that be an open house of the 55 Church Street facility, so we can have people come in and take a look around, get refreshments, and see what changes that we've made. That is a good question, and I still have to get that contract from Ryan Kane, the rector director. But hopefully, hopefully, it will be well-attended, and they'll have updates. They're very good about updating their websites, so, and that's all for now.
Do we have dates yet as to when the parking in Kai's Road and behind in Walden Street area will begin?
I don't have that. I think that, I had heard that it was going to be either later in the summer, early fall, and so I think that...
I gathered before September 1st, but keep an eye on that then.
I was told that a lot of the paving companies are sort of straight out, and so the Public Works Department actually ended up delaying some of the paving to try to secure a better price. So I know that the Harvey Wheeler parking lot, for example, was one that was slated for last year and was put off, so I think, but I can ask Rich Rain if he has a master plan for what's being done with.
We'll certainly want to give notice as early as we can on that.
Have we done business with the Tribiani company before? Have they done projects around here that we?
Not that I'm aware of. I did just a cursory, looked through our files and didn't see anything, but it's entirely possible that it's on Chris's desk, and that is an area I do not go.
So this is the paving of Phase 1. This is a two-phase project. This is the simpler paving, improving the road surface. The bigger project will be replacing the bridges.
That's my understanding, yes.
And they'll also go out the bid separately.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we'll move on to the dog order violation update, 15 Chase Road. As of last report, the fencing had not been completed to the satisfaction of the police department. There was an effort made to impound the dog, and the owners were not cooperative, took the dog inside, and were unwilling to turn the dog over to the police without a warrant. We have now been in contact with our attorney drafting up a civil complaint. This is something that would go before the Concord District Court, and the District Court judges don't have much experience in this area, so that we are proceeding to make sure that everything is done properly according to the law. And it's a little disappointing that we're not getting the cooperation that we, I think we have bent over backwards to try to accommodate the party, and they are not reciprocating, but hopefully, in the meantime, they will be, their fencing has been going up, but it's just not completed in a way that the police feel is secure enough. And hopefully, that may happen before, in fact, we get a court order, but that's kind of the status of it.
And I do have an update from Lieutenant Morehan that he actually sent a little bit before 6 o'clock today that said that he had spoken to the homeowner and said that he would put a six-foot-high bamboo screening as exits on the Prairie Street side, and he does have a 24-foot stockade fencing, but he only needs about six more feet to finish the entire enclosure. So the lieutenant recommended that the homeowner get six more feet of stockade, and that that would more than serve the purpose of the bamboo reading, and he'd not have to purchase the reading. And Lieutenant Morehan also sent me some photos of what it currently looks like, which we've printed out, and you're certainly welcome to take a look at those. So it sounds like there's progress towards compliance, but not full compliance at this point.
Unless there's further questions on that, we can move to review the update of APP 43, which deals with the naming of town property. This was last amended back in 2013. I believe we all have a copy. This would, in essence, allow for the naming of and the placing of a plaque or commemorative marker within town buildings or upon town-owned lands to recognize contributions to the town by individuals or groups. And this kind of both cleans up the notion that we're referred to as a Select Board instead of Board of Selectmen, but it also expands the board's ability to allow for these. So I don't know whether anybody has any comments or thoughts about this. It came up in part because the Giraud land, there was going to be a naming in that regard, and also, I believe, that there was something with the cemetery that we handled a couple of meetings ago.
I thought this looked good.
Yeah.
That could be true.
Then I guess we would entertain a motion to accept this.
I move to approve the revised version of APP 43, the naming of town properties.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Okay, we now are moving to vote to approve the Giraud land acquisition, purchase, and sale agreement. This has been signed. I believe we all got copies of it. I would note that there are a couple of restrictions in the purchase and sale. After the closing, the buyer agrees to impose a perpetual conservation restriction on a portion of the property in accordance with Mass. General Laws, Chapter 184, and the requirements of Mass. General Law 44B. And the buyer agrees to record a mutually acceptable deed restriction on all of the property that will prohibit the development of housing except for one unit of affordable housing within an area shown on a plane, a plan attached here too, for the maximum time period permissible by applicable law. And the parties agree that the existing home located on the property shall not remain in its current location as of the date of the agreement. Within one year of the closing, the buyer shall either relocate or demolish the property. So those are restrictions within the purchase and sale that have been discussed by the board and have been accepted, so that's kind of where we stand on that.
I'm not sure if it's worth noting that the initial restriction is because some of the CPC money was used, so I just wouldn't want folks to think that we're restricting it, you know, after having the housing conversation, and that the parcel that we've designated is actually a little bit more than an acre of property, where when we were having conversations, initially, we had said perhaps a quarter of an acre, an eighth of an acre, and we actually took a percentage of the overall land, so I think it's probably more than enough to make sure that everybody's interests can be represented if that's what folks want to do.
Well, I just want to compliment you, especially Kate, because I know you were very heavily involved, but this is exciting. I mean, what a huge opportunity for all of us, and especially those of us who, for whom this will be the access to water and water recreation, and a beautiful place to recreate alongside the Bruce Freeman Rail Trail, the entrance to Concord.
Great.
It's a lovely location, and I think a very important one for that area, so. Any other comments, anybody?
So I just have a procedural question. So a CR has to be approved by the state, is that right?
Yes.
So what happens if the state doesn't approve the CR as written because of the separation of an acre of land as potential housing development? Is that a?
It's not generally unusual, and we're not actually separating it. We're saying that it could be used for all purposes, including this. The only stipulation that we have is that it can have just one unit of housing, and given its proximity both to the Warner's Pond area and then the other conservation restriction will have to CPC, I don't believe that there would be an issue. And the CPC restriction is actually required through the legislature, so I think that they would be wholly supportive of that.
Thank you.
So I'd also like to, you know, thank everyone who worked on this for the inclusion of an opportunity, at least for affordable housing, while at the same time, I want to be sure to say that, you know, I've applauded the recreational purpose and support that. So the fact that we could at least present the opportunity, I think, is helpful.
Absolutely.
We have a motion?
I move to accept and approve the Giraud land acquisition, purchase, and sale agreement as presented during the June 18, 2018 executive session of the Select Board.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you. We now move to the discussion of the 2018, 2019 Board Goals. We have distributed the Board Goals from last year. I think there is some, I've got from Alice, an update, and it seems to me that we can add to some of the goals and update it. What I would ask, I guess, is if anybody else has updates, to get them to me, and I'll try to put together kind of a final report, and we can, at the next meeting, perhaps, see if we can get an agreement on those.
I'm imagining, yes, that especially with the approval by the Long Range Plan folks on that, looking at how that'll move in would be useful.
And I think, obviously, one of our main goals is organizing the town manager search and getting that accomplished. So we do have some, you know, new and important goals to continue with, but there's also some that we didn't have to grapple with last year that...
Some that are gone.
Yes.
Happily, because we accomplished them. Or if we didn't, they were accomplished.
Will you post a draft of those on, I mean, I know the, last year's goals are on the website, but if we have a draft, post the draft so folks could look at it.
Yeah, we can get that forwarded.
Yeah.
So the next item is the discussion of the town manager evaluation process. And again, that will be, the format will be largely what was used in the last year. And we will get, I think that has been sent out. I don't know if people have received that, or if not, we can get, okay. We'll get that sent out as well, and just get that forwarded comments to me, and we can get sort of a finalized draft. I don't think we're in a great rush. Chris tells me that that usually is done by September, so we do have some time, but wanted to get the process started. So the next item is the follow-up of board actions from town meeting. And that, we have a number of items, so we can perhaps go bit by bit. The Community Resilience Goal, Article 23. Alice, do you want to, that, I think we have been following up on it, and action's been taken, and...
So in terms of resiliency planning, the two things have happened. There, you're at town meeting, language was inserted in a number of places for the planning board to consider sustainability and resiliency in reviewing site plans, and they're looking for some help in defining resiliency, what that checklist might look like, and also for sustainability. The town, as you heard from, I think, Kate at the last meeting, that received a vulnerability assessment grant, which is about making sure our community is resilient. Part of that process will be the development, I believe, of a stakeholder group and a working group. And so when that, when we start working on that grant, we'll need to find some volunteers to be in the conversation about resiliency planning.
Great.
We have a very large grant, $15,000 more than most other communities, to do community engagement.
Now, we've been very successful in the grant process, and I think that's largely due because we spend the money wisely and get the value out of it, and that's appreciated by the state government, so.
I also think that we're used often as a model or as a, you know, as a test case, just like with the electric bus. I mean, where we can launch, as you said, successfully, and then we can also be a place to try things out, so.
We then have the appropriate funds for 2229 Main Street, the NMI StarMet Superfund Site redevelopment plan. That, I think we've been trying to get a committee up and running, and I'm not sure how much sort of success we've had in pushing that forward.
So I'm not sure which comes first. The, I, well, maybe you can speak to it. Have you gone to the 2229 committee?
Yeah, I spoke to Pam Rockwell. That committee hasn't met since I've been seated.
2229 committee.
2229, so I spoke with her, and she sent me some material. She said at this point, apparently, Chris has contacted EPA and needs to hear back from them, and that that's necess, and then the second piece is getting a consultant for the 25K that was awarded at the town meeting, approved at the town meeting, and she feels that, so that's in Chris's hands right now. He's waiting, he went, he's waiting to hear from them. She felt that it's important to keep pushing that so that EPA will respond and get their consultant piece set, the technical support piece set up.
So I think the town has to apply for the technical assistance grants for land use planning. I'm not sure, but I think that's the process.
Well, that may be part of the conversation, that why she, Chris needs to contact EPA. But just to keep it moving was the main message she wanted to send.
Do you have any insights on that, Kate?
So it's been quite busy.
Don't worry.
My understanding is that Chris has not been able to make progress on contacting the EPA, but when he does, he's planning on it when he gets back, and he's looking for, to talk with Elaine Stanley, who's a member of the EPA, about the town meeting vote, the formation of a new committee, including a charge, and the plan for having an EPA-sponsored contractor, and having the EPA-sponsored contractor will allow us to be able to start the planning phase, and I think that that is probably next on the docket to get done.
Yep, then Article 29 was a limiting of traffic speed, and my understanding is that that requires a town hearing, so we will set that up at some point after Chris returns, whether it's prior to August 1 or prior to September 1, I'm not sure, but we will, apparently, under the procedures, we have to have a hearing on that, or the moratorium, Article 44, Moratorium on Implementation of Natural Resources Commission, Dog Restrictions on Conservation Land.
Um, Alice had a question.
I'm sorry, I had a question about that last one. Yeah, so what has to go to a hearing?
There has to, apparently, there has to be a open meeting, a hearing, before we can, that's one of the necessary steps before we can actually implement it.
This is a, this was the town-wide 25 mile an hour, or 30 mile an hour?
Twenty-five, correct.
The town meeting enabled us to do it.
So it requires a public hearing?
Hearing, and then we have to, I think, the Select Board then votes on it.
Okay, thank you. I was unclear of that process.
So the restrictions on conservation land, my understanding is not a lot, we don't expect much to take place on that.
No, I think there was an understanding of what was about, an understanding of the feeling expressed, and I know that there's more study being done, but I don't, there wasn't an active, there's no initiative that is going to change anything, but there's more education and more studying going on.
And I think people understood that the town meeting did not have the authority to require a natural resource to have a moratorium, so. And I'm not sure if there were any other items that came under the follow-up to the...
Town meeting?
Town meeting.
I don't...
I think those were largely the ones.
Acquisition of Giraud land, that's moving ahead.
Yeah.
Right. Okay.
So I guess now we have the letter of support for House Bill 404-1 concerning pollinators.
We, you might recall that the board submitted a letter to the legislature last year in support of the bill, which essentially is working toward reducing the use of neonicotinoids, and the bill is refiled again this year, and I would encourage us to rewrite, so this gets the kind of attention it needs.
And I believe the first one was when you were the chair in August of 2016.
Could be.
That's what...
So long ago.
Well, it's interesting, because my 11th, actually, I guess she's now technically a rising senior at the high school, one of the Q5, which is a new initiative at the high school for the last two weeks of school, that's... at the high school for the last two weeks of school, that's, which seems like an oxymoron, that can't be five quarters, but that's what they're calling it. And there are a number of elective, she took beekeeping and pollinator health, which was a really interesting, so there's, the, the level of education is growing, and I suspect if we wanted to get some active future voters involved, there would be some excitement.
Well, just remind us that we do have a Pollinator Health Advisory Committee, that it's actually met now. And at that meeting, Mark Hanson, who's been very active, of course, had reported that is not scientific, but not back of the envelope, studied that there were very few, if any, hives that survived the winter, so it was really.
Wow.
Pretty bad.
It was kind of shocking how decimated they've become.
I think he wrote, he wrote also that that was fairly true in Carlisle as well.
Wow, I know that you can't get, that Carl honey, which is usually available, is very hard to find.
Really?
I have not, I've had a hard time.
So anyway, I'm hoping we can do that, and I would.
And the letter would be to ours, to Corey Atkins, to Mike Barrett, and to the chair of the committee?
Yeah.
Dykma, right?
Yeah.
Carol Dykma.
Yeah.
So I'd move to authorize the chair to sign and transmit a letter of support of House Bill forty, forty-one concerning pollinators to our representatives under the chair of the committee.
Second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, that will be done. Then we have also now the Business Recognition Program. I believe you were.
I was, as you will recall, we'd received a letter from Bill Montague encouraging us to think about this, I met with Bill and talked to a number of people about it, and I think it's a good idea. The idea is simply to make some kind of recognition of retailers in Concord who have served the citizens for a certain number of years. And so the proposal that I would make, and I'd like to propose it to us as a draft kind of tonight, I wrote an email to, I think all of you, or to you, Tom, and that is we simply recognize at some date, and I suggested Concord's founding or birthday or something like that, and recognize businesses that have been in business for twenty-five, fifty, seventy-five, and hundred years, with sort of color-coded or metal-coded kind of certificates or plaques.
Like a proclamation of some type.
Well, I think for those, I don't think we need to do proclamations for all of them, but I would, in the proposal, any business who's been in town for a hundred years, I think ought to get a proclamation and a big pat on the back. And in fact, we have one that is celebrating its hundred-and-eighth year in this town this year. So I think if we got it going.
And what is that one?
That's Merrill Farm.
That's where they.
And we could, we have, you know, the Five and Dime, Vanderhoek, there's a lot of folks who've been in town a long time, and I think we should recognize them.
How long has the Colonial Inn been?
Well, since seventeen seventy-six, according to their sign, I'd vouch for it, but, so what I would propose is that I write it up as a formal request, and that I work together with Andrew to come up with some kind of placky kind of thing that we could hand out, and then when we get it organized, then we could pick a date for our inauguration. The one thing that I wasn't totally clear about was just how we would ensure we knew, I mean, it's, you know, something, some pretty obvious, but I bet there's businesses that, you know, we'd have to do some work to make sure we understood who'd been in town.
Chasing incorporation paper, or what would?
Well, I don't exactly know what we would do, I mean, some of the businesses, we know they've been here forever, and we can just go ask them, you know, but.
And hopefully, once this gets off the ground, the businesses may notify the town manager's office.
I think we've got some work to do to make sure that we've got the right record-keeping, and we've done a thorough enough search to do it, but I'm happy to work with Andrew or Kate, whoever's going to do it, but I think it'd be a.
Well, I think it's a great idea.
I would also guess that the, you know, businesses that have been here for a hundred years or anywhere near that century mark are, might be cultural icons and representative from both the cultural districts that we have in recognition.
Right.
And I know there's discussion going on right now regarding that, which is sort of a, I'll jump ahead with this particular update, to expand some of the cultural districts in West Concord and Concord Center to capture some of the businesses that were unaware of that activity and are now saying, hey, why, why, where's, I want to be a part of this, and I think that's exciting, that that's what it's already engendering.
I'll try to come back to you at the next meeting or the following one, something a little more concrete, but that's the idea, and we thank Mr. Montague for pressing this issue and making us think about it.
It's a good idea.
Good idea.
Very good. Are we now ready for public comments? Is there anybody who would like to make a, yes, please, step forward. And I didn't announce earlier, but when you step forward, please identify yourself and your residence, and speak in a loud enough voice so that even the people behind you can hear.
Because this meeting is being recorded.
Yes, and being recorded, thank you. How I forgot.
Thank you very much, my name is Stuart Weeks from One Hundred Newbury Court.
You're going to have to keep it much louder.
My name is Stuart Weeks from One Hundred Newbury Court here in Concord. I wanted to apprise the select board of three initiatives that, after a conversation with Chris Whalen, to them we may be bringing to the special town meeting, but there would be community forums during our upcoming Village University celebration from July 4th to July 11th. They've been previewed in a column I read in the Concord Journal called Uncommon Sense, and they are the fruit of forty years of work of the Center for American Studies here in Concord. I'll be brief, the first is the Concord Nobel Prize for Peace. I think we all know with the school shootings and concerns in Korea, that we still have work to do here. This addresses the fundamental, the essential prerequisites for peace. That is, we can talk all day long about the importance of peace, but the question becomes, how do we actually get it? We have representatives of nearly fifty institutions in Concord, political, cultural, economic. In this sense, I think it's somewhat unprecedented as we look to our four-hundredth anniversary in that it's really the community as a whole coming together. Concord means peace, and these awards will be given to international individuals. One person who's been nominated is the grandson of Mahatma Gandhi, who never got the award, some are concerned for political reasons. So this would be a gift from the community of Concord that has, as I say, representatives across the spectrum. More recently, the superintendent of the schools, the chairman, the president of the Concord Carlisle League of Women Voters, so we're about fifty panelists in the political sphere, the economic sphere, the cultural sphere, who would choose the recipients. So that's just a brief appraisal, number one. Number two, we're launching an international cartoon contest to conclude the bicentennial anniversary of Thoreau's birth, entitled Don't Become the Tool of Your Tools. My sense is that for a long time, people smoked, it was in the films, it was in magazines, it was glamorous, and then all of a sudden, warning labels appeared, and I think we understand what happened from there. I think we're reaching the same thing with these electronic contraptions. Chris Whalen described an interesting experience he had trying to jog and found a car coming right at him, the person who's driving was on their laptop. I think we all know, have this experience with our young ones, I think our kids are being kidnapped by these contraptions, and many of their parents are being hijacked. We've met with Verizon here in Concord, and the question we would consider bringing to the special town meeting, if there's support from the town, thus the upcoming town hearing, or community hearing, not official hearing, but during the Village University, is whether any institutions, businesses that sell these electronic contraptions here in Concord would be encouraged to have a warning label in this, for instance, in the form of this letter that was, appeared in the Concord Journal, talking about Henry David Thoreau's words, don't become the tool of your tools. Cartoons would accompany this letter that would be read with children, parents, and grandparents, so they really have a sense of what these devices are, that Steve Jobs and Bill Gates are very circumspect in allowing their children and grandchildren to have access to this. So I think this is, we're approaching an interesting revelation with respect to these gadgets we've just taken for granted, we hold up not just to our head, but to our temples all day long. So that's the second point, and then the third one is something we've been working with, as Mike knows, for a while, and that is something called the Concord Resolution. The Concord Resolution is about funding our public works projects publicly, as in apples and apples, as opposed to privately, through the private bond market, where although Concord is, is really in much better shape than many communities, there are a lot of communities around this country that are caving in because they cannot afford to pay it two or three times over in interest payments for their public works. As one who grew up in Concord, I think you all wouldn't be here and giving the time you're giving if we didn't recognize that this town has an important heritage, and as with the bottle resolution that came forward, I think Concord can take the lead in a number of areas to whom much is given, much is expected. I'll conclude by just sharing an account, the Concord Resolution passed in a town in New Hampshire, my work is between Concord and New Hampshire. I took the Assistant Superintendent of Schools in this community and some of the elected officials to a meeting with Frank Morris, who's a former chair of the President of the Boston Federal Reserve Bank, to raise this question of how can we fund our public works projects publicly? Again, apples and apples, as opposed to apples and oranges, to fund it privately. And Frank's opening words were really, in a sense, if I can use the term providential, it couldn't have been more perfect what he said, he said, most people don't realize that when I built this bank, the Federal Reserve Bank of Boston, all I did was write a check. And I said, thank you very much, that's just our point. With all due respects, Mr. Morris, if you can write a check on our national credit to build your private bank, as the Federal Reserve acknowledges it is a private institution, why cannot we, we the people, get access to our national credit to build our roads, bridges, schools, and sewage systems without having to pay two or three times over in interest payments? Frank said, that's a very good question. And I think the main point is that it's not asked, it's not discussed. I think that also belongs to our community. I'll conclude by saying and discussing this for years with Tony Legabo, we had wonderful conversations, both of us share a love for Lincoln. He said Concord's hands are really tied by state and federal regulations. He said to really make this work, you'd have to bring to Concord, perhaps to a special town meeting, our state and federal legislators. So no decisions are being made, this is simply to apprise you all that these issues will be brought to the Village University between July 4th and July 11th to invite feedback from our fellow citizens, and then I'll give you a further update. So thank you very much.
Thank you. What do you have, any questions or comments I'd like to make?
I just want to be clear that this is not a town event, this is a private event.
Thank you, Mike, yes, this is, this is Village University's initiative of the Center for American Studies.
Thank you very much. Now we are committee liaison reports. Ah, yes, sorry, please come forward, can you see your hand?
Sorry, I just have a quick question for clarification, and the supplemental materials, one of the warrants.
You offer your name and.
Oh, I'm sorry, Janet Benvenuti, thirty-five Jonas Brown Circle. One of the warrants that was in the packet had to do with independence of the press with regard to CCTV, it was online today, so I assume that that's already been resolved, that you have the citizen committee set up, is that?
Oh, yes, the, yeah, the committee was formed, I think, golly, I think we formed it several months ago, and it's, it's now fully. I think we're still, actually, there may still be seats, but they have quorum now.
Okay, I was surprised to see that among the papers online today, so that's why I'm following up, okay, thanks.
Thank you.
Anybody else, I jumped the gun, so I'm double checking now. Now we'll move to committee liaison reports. Linda, do you want to begin?
I joined fellow colleague here at the, a recent planning board meeting, and basically so that I could, part of my education process as a new select board member, trying to become more familiar with their process, since I'm liaison to the zoning board of appeals, I wanted to see where the process starts. So I did that, the main, and, and then the other meeting I attended was a meeting that was held by, or I think called to order by the Hugh Cargill Trust Committee, meeting with a variety of groups that deal with those who are either in affordable housing or accessing funds from the Hugh Cargill Trust, and I'll let Mike say more about that. Those are the two that I attended.
It's, the Hugh Cargill Trust has raised an issue in conjunction with the long-range plan, and the issue sort of goes like this, if affordable housing is a goal in town, and so is economic diversity, then the, the economic diversity will change in town, and we may have in town more people who are going to need financial support. If that's the case, what are we doing about it? It's one thing to have houses, but if folks come here and need help, what are we doing to ensure that we're going to have available the kind of financial support? So Hugh Cargill put together a lot of folks in this room who had responsibilities for understanding that market, and I unfortunately couldn't get her until late in the meeting, I know Linda was there, but it was probably fifteen, sixteen people.
Exactly.
From various groups in town, and so I think it's an important issue.
It's a very important issue, because it's, doesn't, we're not doing anybody a favor having them be able to come to town, and then the challenge to be able to participate and do whatever else as a full-town citizen.
And in fact, that, that came up at length during the long-range plan discussions, as one of those intersecting points.
And it's, it's, it has other layers to it too, because you'll remember, we passed this senior tax fairness legislation, which is going to be great for our seniors, and will do its purpose, but Hugh Cargill had money for tax relief. And now if a number of people are going to be able to get tax relief through this new piece of legislation that was passed, we have this money locked into tax relief, which we may not need it for tax relief, we might need it for something else. And Alice would know, we also have a committee, the trustees of town donation, who have sort of amended the way they think about funds that would be available from various town accounts that could be used in this matter. And I would just say, without, I don't want to go into detail, but some more restrictive than had been. So that funds has been restricted, the tax money for property relief is now not going to be needed for a certain part of the population, and then couple that with all the diversity we talked about, it's a complicated problem that we better get on top of, or we'll be playing catch-up.
The only thing I would add to your excellent comments is that it's also clear that many of the people who need to access the Hugh Cargill funds and, and other assistance are not necessarily, quote, in affordable housing, they are in existing homes in Concord. So I just want to be sure to say that.
And since one of the goals here would be in part to allow people to age in place or to live, you know, that's, again, just, you don't, not everybody who needs assistance comes through the same gate.
Oh, that's exactly the point of getting all of these folks together, to see if we could make sense of all of the sources of potential, funded life plant, Concord oil, provides, you know, the churches, the social. provides, you know, the churches, the social organizations in town, so.
I think tax bills arrived today, so it's even more timely. So is that your report, Linda, or?
Yes.
Anymore? Okay. Mike, you want to-
That's my report too.
Alice?
Okay. Well, I couldn't be in three places at once. I had three meetings all at once. So I attended CSEC, we heard an update from the Sustainability Director on where they're moving. As you recall, we rewrote the charge and updated it for CSEC. It's now the Concord Sustainability and Energy Committee, still CSEC. And they reviewed the charge, had some questions, and accept all the terms of the new charge. And we've had several new members joining CSEC now. And the major change would be that CSEC works closely with Kate and Kate on sustainability efforts, so that we can broaden our impact on issues regarding sustainability and resiliency in town. I tried to attend the MMA meeting the other morning, it was the Public Works and Infrastructure meeting. My train was an hour late in arriving to Boston, and at that point, it was almost too late to go to the meeting. I turned around.
A little frustration.
A little frustration. Minuteman had, we had a meeting, still on budget, on time, and as we all know, it's still a year advanced from where they thought they would open the door, so things are really progressing quickly.
And they got their Canadian steel on time.
They did, they did get their steel before the tariffs. They said they have plenty of steel on, and White Pond Advisory Committee did not have a quorum. But now we also appointed at least one new member, I think, so the quorum will be easier to achieve.
And I've given one of my updates. I was away last week, so while the NRC did meet, and so did, so did, well, actually, it's up here, and so did the new West Concord Cultural District, still waiting for Concord Center to coalesce and follow suit, as did the PAC, which is the committee we were being asked about, which is the CCTV ad nauseam, the committee. I did not attend and so can't give specifics, although I think you're going to have some conversation about where we are. I know that the, one of the points discussed, since the, excuse me, the committee met, was the impact of the huge Comcast outage and what that showed about our resiliency there, and which goes to some of the concerns that were expressed going into it. Happily, beyond the town's broadband, I didn't know about that. I didn't know about that either.
Yeah, complicated. The night that Alice had her three meetings, I was hoping to help out, but we had a library committee meeting that night, where the two new members went to their first meeting, introduced themselves, they discussed the meeting schedule for the remainder, and as Kate mentioned, they're going to have a forum in September at the townhouse. They discussed the library's wireless network and privacy considerations. They gave us an update on the library's long-range plan, in that that is going to be moving forward. Then they had a director's report and a finance report. Their next meeting is going to be July 17th at 7:00 PM in the library trustee room. I also then attended the finance committee on June 28th. They discussed the issue of observer assignments, as they call it. They want to put more emphasis on attending committees that impact and influence finance decisions, such as Affordable Housing, the Energy Futures Task Force, Climate Action, and not necessarily send people to the Board of Health, Natural Resource Committee, that type of thing, which I think is an interesting concept. They do intend to come to the chair's breakfast to try to pick up if there's a committee that they don't anticipate is going to have something dealing with finance, but then they find out that there may be some overlap in that area. They, there was a software demonstration of clear government municipal transparency, which was an interesting discussion. They also distributed the fiscal year 2020 guidelines for information letters and discussed those. And then there was a proposal which passed to have the select board establish a permanent building committee in order to control construction quality and cost. And suggested that perhaps Mr. Swain was the party that proposed that, that he come and present something a little bit more sort of solid in terms of what he really saw. Apparently, a number of other communities have the same type of thing, and Concord had the committee a number of years ago. And my understanding is it sort of became dormant when there wasn't activity. And I think that's kind of one of the risks. The other risk that I worry about is that a committee sometimes can be a barrier for action rather than an assistance. And I'm hoping that we don't get, you know, sort of paralysis due to over-analysis. But it's an interesting idea, and they felt that it had implications that construction costs could be kept down if it was done correctly. So that was why the finance committee-
Not done correctly?
I think the discussion that they had seemed to center on the high schools and some other overruns there. So I did not get into a question and answer with them, I was more the observer, but that's why I think it would be-
We should have invited him to come to our session.
I would think that's why it might be helpful to have him come and give a presentation. So that was the committees that I attended.
I do believe Lexington has this building, permanent building committee.
Yeah, and they mentioned there are a couple of others, neighboring ones, that had the same. So, you know, it's not necessarily a bad idea, but I think it's, like any committee, it has to be done correctly. And I worry about, his recommendation was a permanent committee where members stayed on forever and ever, amen. And that worries me a little bit, but as they say, I'm open and I'd like to hear more about the prospect, so. But there clearly, I thought particularly the observations of going to some committees and sending more of their members to things like the school committee meetings, so, which has a larger impact on their committee, was an interesting concept and makes a lot of So with that, we are now down to miscellaneous and correspondence. I don't know whether anybody, nope. There was, I saw, and I should have noted it, somebody had written a letter, Kate, about a tree that they felt was in sort of a perilous-
Chris cleared that out.
Yeah.
It was not-
Perilous location and thought it should have a look at. I don't know whether-
It's been cleared up.
Very good. So I guess you're now ready for committee nominations.
Okay. I nominate Peter Hewitt of 261 Central Street to the West Concord Junction Cultural District Advisory Committee. Douglas Bacon of 410 Lowell Road to the Concord Housing Development Corporation. Amy Kaiser of 294 Commonwealth Avenue to the West Concord Advisory Committee. Nina Nichols, is it Nina Nichols First, of 48 Eaton Street to the White Pond Advisory Committee. I guess those are all of my nominations. Is First the last name, or is that, I only heard it as Nina Nichols. That's fine.
Please.
Nina Nichols First.
Yeah.
Okay. Okay. Also have committee appointments this evening. I move to appoint Vincent Carlson of 34 Everett Street to the Affordable Housing Funding Committee for a term to expire April 30th, 2019. Krista Collins of 56 Highland Street and Joan Ferguson of 62 Nishobo Road to the Junction Village Open Space Task Force for terms to expire September 30th, 2019. Nicole Palmer of 1771 Main Street to the Concord Housing Development Corporation for a term to expire May 31st, 2021.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I heard last time, before we get to the next one, that Liz Ross was going to be nominated to that-
Yes, I spoke to her about that, and due to her involvement with the CHDC, she's-
Can't do it.
She said, "You know what, it'd be best if I can provide staff support for stuff, but as a voting member, I think I should use her for other things," so.
I heard the same thing from her.
Yeah, she just wanted it.
Yep. We also have a committee charge extension, if I may, that we moved to extend the current Comprehensive Long Range Plan Committee appointments. John Boynton, Margaret Briggs, James Bryant, Peter Hunter, Wally Johnston, Gary Kleiman, Baron Lambert, oh Baron Lambert, yeah, Barbara Morris, Sharon Leonard, Nick Pappas, Wade Rubenstein, Elise Woodward, and Judith Zombrecher to August 31st, 2018. They're going to complete their work soon.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you.
We also have some committee reappointments. Move to reappoint-
You're lucky.
Yeah. To reappoint Lisa Holdorf of 449 Barris Mill Road to the Agriculture Committee for a term to expire May 31st, 2021. Gail Hire of 54 Nancy Road to the Suasco River Stewardship Council as a full member for an unexpired term to expire May 31st, 2021. Alyssa Brown of 158 Laurel Street to the Suasco River Stewardship Council as associate member for a term to expire May 31st, 2021. Thomas Piper of 106 Lee Drive to the Financial Audit Advisory Committee for a term to expire May 31st, 2021.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you.
And we move to confirm the town manager reappointment of Karen Gibson of 1641 Main Street to the Comprehensive, well, let's see.
New name.
The Concord Sustainable, no, Concord Sustainability and Energy Committee for a term to expire May 31st, 2021. New name of the committee, takes a little bit of getting used to.
We have had a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
And are we ready to adjourn?
I think, I don't see any strong objections from any place, so I think we are, we have to do this by, so I'll take the motion and then we do it individually.
So we move to adjourn to executive session for the purpose of discussing land acquisition and not to reconvene in open session. The executive session is needed to protect strategy discussions affecting litigation on the stated matters.
Second.
For the roll call vote. Linda?
Aye.
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 Thank you all.
Thank you.
From tonight, we got it done.